Okay.
How long did it take?
Bad job.
How you doing? We're.
How you doing?
You all right? Yeah, we're all right. And then we're also live, so.
Are we good?
Yep.
All right.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open this meeting. I'd like to thank everybody for being here. I'd also like to make a motion to pass the chair duties to Michael Anderson for the duration of this special meeting. That's why I'm saying.
I second it.
Okay, motion is passed.
Appreciate it. So, good afternoon, everybody. Purpose of today's special meeting is to review the circumstances surrounding the recent removal of a large, healthy, live oak associated with the Charles Street Drainage Project. This was a significant loss for our urban canopy and to the character of our community. As many residents have expressed, it was also a loss that occurred without the level of transparency or public communication expected under our tree care ordinance and longstanding community values. Before we begin, I do want to address an important matter openly and on the record. The city manager Scott Marshall has formally stated that PTAC's request for information, attendance, and participation in this review is, quote, "outside the committee's scope of authority", and the city has declined to provide senior staff or project representatives for this meeting. We respectfully disagree. The committee convenes today under the authority granted to us in Chapter Three of the City Code, which charges PTAC with maintaining Beaufort's Urban Forestry Management Plan, advising city leadership on matters affecting public trees, and maintaining the data necessary for the city to retain its Tree City USA certification. These responsibilities require us to understand, and when necessary, to review major actions affecting the health, preservation, and management of Beaufort's urban forest. The removal of a substantial specimen tree unquestionably falls within this scope. We cannot carry out these duties in vacuum. We cannot maintain a preservation plan without understanding why preservation did not occur, and we cannot advise city leadership without examining the facts behind major decisions that affect our tree canopy. And we cannot maintain the data required for Tree City USA, particularly regarding canopy loss, if we are prevented from reviewing the events that produce that loss. This is not an attempt to exercise enforcement power the committee does not have. This is not a quasi judicial proceeding. This is the committee performing its statutory responsibility to gather information, analyze impacts, and recommend improvements. Our intent today is both straightforward and constructive, to gather the facts available to us, to review the policies that apply to the situation, and to identify where our community's tree management practices may need further clarification or improvement. We are not here to assign blame or challenge anyone's motives. We are here because the citizens of Beaufort expect accountability and how their public resources, especially our heritage trees, are managed. They expect that best practices will be followed, and they expect this committee to uphold its responsibilities with integrity, diligence, and transparency. Even without the presence of senior city staff or project representatives, we will proceed with the information available to us, including public documents, established ordinances, and the requirements of the Tree City USA program. Our goal is to ensure that the public has a clear record of what occurred and that we provide thoughtful recommendations to help prevent similar issues in the future. We undertake this work not for ourselves, but for the residents we serve, for the health of our urban forest, and for the long-term quality of life in the city of Beaufort. Then I'd like to move on to the agenda to discuss the tree removal as the first item on our agenda. So. Has anybody received, to best of your knowledge, and far from any even on PTAC for a significant amount of time, have you received any kind of communication whatsoever about drainage project or linked in on decision-making plans or specifications?
Yeah.
Project or questions that might have about that?
The first I heard of it was in our last meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, enjoy. Same thing?
I don't have any thought on it.
Okay. So I'd like to, if it's all right with you guys, I'd like to enter into the record the printout here that I've got for the Charles and Craven Streets, the downtown, the point downtown drainage, and this is from the Catwalk Improvement Projects website. And essentially, it's an overview that also includes questions about about permits and updates here, public updates, I should say. Now, going through this, I have not seen anything that indicates that there was any discussion about the particular tree. The only thing, there is a project, and this is from July 1st of 2024. The project identified as the Point Downward Drainage Study completed in August 2022. The project is 2,000 feet in length and will involve utility relocation, roadway resurfacing, and limited improvements to sidewalks and curbs. Now, that is just a small snippet. There are additional updates that discuss the project as a final permitting and utility conflict resolution stages, but there is nothing that I have been able to find in public record on that on that overview that discusses anything regarding this tree. In addition, there is the single, there's the one-page handout that I'd also like to enter into record, the Charles and Craven Street Republic Hard Rock Street Drainage Improvement Project. In this, it does outline that the plan is to design and implement stormwater drainage improvements throughout the city, alleviate persistent local flooding, identified through the dip point in downtown drainage study completed in August 22. Now, there are proposed improvements here. Now, this section here says this, these project areas are located within natural depressions, and much of the infrastructure was installed in the early 1900s, which is consistent with the age of our tree in question, and are therefore undersized and inadequate to convey the city's increasing storm events and rising high tides. The improvement plans include new and enlarged storm drain pipes, new drainage inlets, and drainage structures and flap gates at outfalls to limit tidal water intrusion into the system. At the completion of the project, the affected roadways will be resurfaced, and sidewalks disrupted by the project will be repaired. Stormwater best management practices will be constructed to improve the stormwater's water quality being discharged into the Beaufort River. This project will result in temporary street closures to allow for the excavation and placement of the storm drain infrastructure. Road closures will be closely coordinated with businesses and property owners well in advance. Again, there is no indication in there, in my opinion, of anything regarding a tree needing to be removed, but 39-inch tree. In addition, in your packet, you will also see that there is a public meeting that was had. I have not been able to find any publicly available recording of this. There is a section here under Design Approach that does have project considerations for grand trees and landscaping. We've requested information from the city, from senior city staff regarding documentation about plans for this particular tree, and I have not received anything. And I don't believe anybody else on this committee has received anything either. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Furthermore. On, let's see here. The, here is the proposed improvements for Charles and Craven Street. And that's the overlay that has the pipe replacement. So. Now, we were told in the last meeting on October 23rd that there, to the best of my knowledge, and when I went back to re-watch the video, that we were presented, there was a pre-existing drain, drain pipe that was running directly underneath the tree in question.
Correct.
Would that be an accurate statement?
That's probably true.
Okay. I'm unsure, I'm not really sure why why that was expressed to us, considering based off of these design plans here, it said the existing drainage system that's highlighted in red is to be abandoned, and it is not running directly underneath the tree that we've got for that particular location. So I think that's probably a question that we should follow up with the city on in terms of accuracy representation when that was presented to us.
Okay.
I don't really see. I understand that, you know, the location of the tree is in the way of the new pipe, but as far as I've been able to determine, there haven't really been any kind of new, or I should say, alternative design plans that I've been able to find that are publicly available that would skirt the drainage, the main drain line and around the particular tree. I did see, I did watch a, there was a prior meeting in which they discussed the size of it. It's a 72-inch pipe. So we're coming in at six feet, essentially, and due to our soil, due to our soils type, they are essentially having to cut a 10-foot wide and almost 15 to 20-feet-deep trench in order to lay that particular piece of pipe due to our soil conditions. And, and the issue of possible collapse on staff as they're working on this project. So I do, so it is, it is a major, it is a very considerable trench that would have to be dug. But again, as far as I've been able to determine, I don't think you guys have been able to find anything either about any kind of an arborist review or any kind of alternative design plans that factor this particular landmark, this particular specimen tree in question.
Right, I have no.
Yeah. So I think we end up having a lot more questions in regard to this particular project because the specifications not only don't match with what we have been briefed on, but it's also, you know, we have a lot of gaps. We have a lot of gaps in the, in the record to include, you know, we don't have a recording of this particular public meeting that was reviewing, that I've been able to find at least, that we've been able to watch and see if there was any discussion concerning that. Do you guys have any other, have any questions or anything on a particular project or things that we would like to put together for the city that we can formally request more documentation or?
Sure. Do you?
You said about the trench, that was for the new?
That's for the new pipe.
Next to the tree.
Well, according, according to their particular plan, that pipe runs, as far as I can tell from the specs, that pipe runs directly where the tree currently is. But we were told in the October 23rd meeting that there is an old drainage pipe that runs directly underneath that tree as well, which I'm not really sure because their own drawings indicated that that's not the case, that the the old pipe is off to the side and that it's planned to be abandoned.
Yeah, so I, I looked at the sketch or diagram, it shows the old pipe directly under the vehicle lane of traffic, and the new pipe is on the other side of the tree underneath the other traffic lane. I didn't see anything underneath the tree. It's an observation.
Do you think that if there was a tree like that, that there would be, with the digging of a trench of that, of that size, that it would have the ability to recover? Or would we probably, we probably need a professional?
I'm not a certified arborist, but the root systems of oak trees are shallow, and I feel that digging trenches that deep and that wide probably would definitely have a negative impact on the tree, just definitely. I can't tell you if it would live or die, but it would have a huge negative impact. There's no doubt.
I think that's something that we would probably need to, we'd probably need to get more information on and make a determination. At least, I guess, would have been asking for an arborist report from the city in regards to this.
And why couldn't they, instead of abandoning the drain pipe, if they're going to trench, why not use the exist, existing?
And I agree with that, you know. I agree with that question, is that why could they not have taken out the existing pipe and use, use that same? Yeah, same side, the same pipe, so it's not to affect the tree.
Even, even on the particular, even on the particular part of this, I would have been interested to see, you know, because we've got, we've got right here on the other side of, on the other side of this building, you know, the other side of this building, there are, there is a lot more paved surface area. So I would be interested, you know, be a question to ask if there would be some kind of an alternative design plan that routed the particular drainage pipe around, around in a way that from that particular, from that particular tree and go to where there's nothing growing already.
I am in agreement with that, you know, I don't think that there were any additional signs wrong done, but I'm not privy to that information, so.
And we've already asked the city for information regarding that. So. I just want to, if you'd be able to help, help me with this part, the, my understanding of the City Code is that we've got two different avenues when it comes to the removal of specimen trees. One requires a particular permit, correct? When it comes to removing a specimen tree, and it requires three parts to that permit. It requires an arborist report. It requires alternative design plans, and then also requires notification of our committee, correct?
Correct.
Now. The other flip side of that is the, that specific permit is not required if the tree removal is part of a site development plan or an infrastructure project, but it doesn't negate requiring an arborist report, an alternate design plan, or notifying us. Is my understanding, is that?
That is my understanding.
Okay. Because that's, because that's the question that, you know, I think we have is, you know, in conversations we've had with the city or heard from the city is that a permit was not required for this, but it doesn't negate the three requirements to satisfy, according to our ordinances, that we need to have an arborist report, alternative design plans, and notification of PTAC prior to a decision being finalized. So I think that's, I think that's something of concern to look into and, you know, and when we put together a report, you know, put together a draft report, I think that's something that we should know to, that we should at least draw attention to, is the fact that the lack of a separate permit requirement does not negate the requirements, those standard requirements set out in our ordinance.
Right.
Do you guys have any other questions or comments? Or anything you guys want, you think that when we do this, when we put our report together, analyzing what happened?
Basically, PTAC wasn't notified, you know, until the last meeting that has received them occurring. And according to the information and the ordinances that I've read, we should have been. That will be part of the report and.
If that works for you guys, we can put together, I can probably work on putting a report together for city council, and I can probably have that. I could probably have that ready by our next regular scheduled meeting on Thursday. And if we review it and we approve that report, that can go, that can go into city council for them to make a decision on further actions necessary.
Okay.
Based off of our recommendations as an advisory committee.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Second thing on our agenda is just reviewing. Is essentially reviewing the roles and responsibilities for PTAC. If it's okay with you guys, I do want to read some parts in regards to that also will help the public understand our advisory role and where our determination comes from, that we are allowed to oversee, or at least have oversight of city decisions. If that's all right with you guys, then, okay. So one of the things, again, I do want to, I would like to enter into the record emails that we received from the city manager. So we initially sent out an email requesting information and also the presence of senior staff with us. And we said that we were willing to also reschedule this meeting to make it convenient. The response that we received is quite unfortunate. At least I feel that is quite unfortunate. Have you guys had a chance to read the email and questions?
No, I have not.
Email from the city manager?
Yeah.
I've never got, I've never received. Unless it's the other one, thank you. I was still, it's just.
You mind just reading those into the record?
Yes, we're about to. So. After we issued a notice, a notice to appear in addition to documentation, I myself and Barb Ferrier, in addition to city council, Ben Copege, Tracy Goldner, Raul Dominguez, Kurt Fries, Norris Bloodsaw, Adam Wellens, and Nathan Faro received an email back saying, "Mr. Anderson, this request and any similar such requests are outside of PTAC's scope of authority and will not be honored." We then also sent an agenda that was basically outlining our hope that, you know, if we would have staff here, senior staff to work with us in an act of cooperation to understand what exactly happened. And the response that we received to that particular agenda was, "Mr. Anderson, this city will not publish PTAC agenda that resembles a quasi judicial hearing. Oversight activities are outside the scope of the commission's duties and responsibilities." A separate email that was sent to Chair, Chair Ferrier. Ms. Ferrier, "The attached draft agenda includes items that fall outside the scope of PTAC's authority specified in Section 3-005, which outlines the duties and responsibilities of the committee." Excuse me. PTAC does not function as an oversight body and is not empowered to conduct quasi judicial hearings. Therefore, the agenda cannot be published as currently drafted." Now, we didn't write the agenda that the city published, correct? I don't think we, either of us.
Yeah.
Okay. And we, we did approve it, however, after they came back and should have sent it to, sent it to you, right?
Right.
Okay. So I think this is one of the things where the public needs to understand that PTAC is an advisory board. We don't have any regulatory authority, nor any kind of essentially enforcement teeth. Our decisions are not final. However, I will say that PTAC is, you know, coming, talking about the Section 3-3005, PTAC is charged with maintaining an urban forestry management plan. Maintain and periodically update an urban forestry management plan that shall define the species of trees to be utilized and specify the best practices and horticultural requirements for the planting, maintenance, and preservation of said trees. This authorizes, in my opinion, this authorizes review of tree removals. To maintain a preservation-oriented plan, PTAC must know when and why significant trees are being removed. A tree removal, especially of a large, healthy specimen, directly affects preservation practices, species standards, canopy management, and policy effectiveness. If we can't fulfill 3-3005 without evaluating instances where preservation did not occur, including city-initiated removals. Now, we also advise the city manager and city council on tree-related matters. In the same section, we shall provide to the city manager, as requested, an assessment of the city parks and shall make recommendations to the city council for the prioritized allocation of monies from within the city's tree fund account. We, this authorizes review because a specimen tree removal affects park and open space quality. This is part of the downtown park, is it not? No. Impacts the city's tree fund, example of mitigation costs, and may require policy funding and procedural recommendations. PTAC cannot meaningfully recommend future practices or funding allocations without understanding past actions, especially unreviewed or controversial removals. PTAC's meetings must be public and open for discussion of tree matters. In Section 3-3006, all meetings of the commission shall be open to the public. This authorizes review, again, because if PTAC is required to meet publicly on matters within its purpose, then tree removals, particularly significant or controversial ones, must be openly reviewable topics. PTAC must be allowed to hear public concerns, and we must be allowed to discuss decisions about public trees, even when those decisions were made by city departments. There is no limitation in 3-3006 restricting what tree-related topics PTAC may discuss publicly. Now, Barb, you've been on this committee for a while. Do you want to talk about, you know, do we have, we have the independence to determine what subjects we bring up in our, in our meetings, correct?
We do, right. We pretty much can bring up any topic, as far as I, you know, as far as I'm concerned. And, and I have to say and go on the record in saying this, that Adam Wellens attends pretty much all of our meetings, and he is very receptive to open-mindedness and assistance in, in what we bring up.
Absolutely.
So.
All right, thank you, Adam. City council retains the right to review PTAC, but the codes do not bar PTAC. City council retains the right to review PTAC, but the codes do not bar PTAC from reviewing city actions. In section three dash three zero zero eight, the city council shall have the right to review the conduct, acts and decisions of the Parks and Tree Advisory Commission. The code does not restrict PTAC from the final decision maker, but does not restrict PTAC from reviewing city decisions. If council can review PTAC, but nothing in three dash three zero zero eight permits staff to restrict PTAC's review topics. Then PTAC may review any matter within its sphere to include public trees, we are allowed to ask for information. We can, we have to make informed decisions that city council may review and to be informed, we are allowed to analyze the facts of the specimen tree removal. Now, one of the most important things in my opinion is regarding the recertification as a tree city USA. Because that comes with its own set of rules and guidelines, if I'm not mistaken. That we have to follow at a national level, right?
That is correct.
And they're pretty strict in strager.
Very strict.
Okay. So we're responsible for the maintenance of the requisite data for recertification as a tree city USA. The tree city USA requires tracking losses. Right?
It does.
Ensuring best management practices. Demonstrating community engagement in urban forestry. So I'm not sure how we can, we, in order to meet national standards, we have to review significant removals, including specimen trees cut by the city. As a mandatory function of our existence, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So. Do you want to go through the requirements for?
For tree city USA?
Yes, ma'am.
These requirements?
Yeah.
Sure. Four, there are four recognition standards. One, we have to have a tree board or department. A designated body like PTAC must be legally established to advise, plan and oversee aspects of urban forestry management. And the board must hold regular public meetings and maintain involvement in tree related, tree related matters. Number two, we have to have a tree care ordinance. The city must adopt and enforce an ordinance that defines public trees, establishes management authority. Sets rules for removal, pruning and planting and outlines permitting, enforcement and responsibilities ordinance. But tree preservation, not solely tree removal. Number three, there must be a community forestry, forestry program with an annual budget of at least two dollars per capita. City must track expenditures, including planting, maintenance, removal, arborist work and canopy management. And number four, an annual Arbor Day observance and proclamation. Demonstrates continuing community engagement. These are not procedural suggestions, they are audited annually during recertification. Number two, tracking tree loss is an explicit and inherent requirement of standards one, two and three. Tree board or PTAC must actively oversee and advise on public tree management. This role cannot be fulfilled without monitoring tree removals, tree health assessments. Policy and ordinance compliance and net canopy loss. Number two. The tree care ordinance must be actively enforced to maintain status. Tree city USA requires an active ordinance that provides. Clear guidance for planting, maintaining and removing public trees. A city that removes major trees outside the ordinances processes risks noncompliance with the tree care ordinance standard. Thus, oversight of tree removals, including whether they complied with ordinance requirements is essential. Number three, the annual budget requirement requires the city to track removal events and their costs. The city must report cost of tree care, cost of removals, cost of planting. And or replacements, arborist fees, mitigation costs. Cannot track spending without tracking when trees were removed, why and where.
I have a question, Barb, have we ever been given access to or been told what the tree budget is for, for the city or? Have we ever been provided that or?
We have been provided that. We've been told in a general sense how much money is in the tree fund.
But we don't know.
Not exact figures.
We don't know exactly.
Right now, I have no idea.
Okay. And we've asked, and we've asked the city for that kind of information, right?
That has been asked, yes, I will say Adam has answered that question. On, I'm going to say on lately, on an ongoing basis, but it changes as development occurs. Arbor Day Foundation requests annual summary data, including number of removals, number of plantings, canopy gain or loss estimates. Forestry programs, successes and failures, significant events affecting the urban forest. This directly obligates PTAC to maintain accurate data regarding tree losses. Okay, Roman, Roman numeral number three. The ordinance explicitly ties PTAC to tree city USA data requirements. The BIFR ordinance states PTAC is responsible for the maintenance of the requisite data for recertification as a tree city USA. It's a mandatory legal duty to, to, to fulfill at PTAC. Know when significant public trees are removed, confirm whether removal followed appropriate standards. Track the canopy loss, track mitigation or replacement plantings. Analyze whether urban forestry practices adhere to the ordinance and identify where improvements are needed. Failure to track tree losses would make compliance with the ordinance impossible. Roman numeral four, why a specimen tree removal requires PTAC review under tree city USA standards. A large, healthy thirty nine inch diameter live oak is a major canopy asset, a specimen tree. A significant contributor to BIFR's urban forest structure. Tree city USA recertification includes review of noteworthy losses, removal of mature trees. Whether alternatives were considered, whether a city's policy. Policies show commitment to preservation and whether urban tree canopy is shrinking. Thus, ignoring the removal of such tree would undermine PTAC's required data tracking. Undermine compliance with the local tree care ordinance, just standard two. Undermine PTAC's statutory duty and risk weakening BIFR's tree city USA recertification. Roman numeral number five, a city cannot maintain tree city USA status if it does not track losses. Tree city USA's required annual documentation includes. A summary of the city's urban forest management, tree inventory updates. Records of removals and plantings, evidence that the tree board is functioning. And evidence that the ordinance is being followed. The city were to adopt the position that we, that quote, we do not need to track or report individual losses of significant trees. Tree city USA standards would be violated because the program depends on. Evidence based management and transparent urban forestry practices. A city that removes trees without documentation or oversight cannot meet national standards. Roman numeral number six says PTAC must review major tree losses to fulfill both local law. And tree city USA obligations. In conclusion, PTAC, the PTAC ordinance assigns PTAC responsibility for tree city USA recertification data. Tree city USA requires documented tree loss tracking. Tree city USA requires active enforcement of local tree ordinances. PTAC must oversee preservation practices and canopy management. And the removal of a large specimen tree is a major forestry event. PTAC is not only allowed. To review the tree, tree removal, PTAC is required to do so. To comply with its statutory obligation in national certification standards.
A lot.
Yeah.
A lot more than. I think, you know, than I think most people realize.
I agree.
You know, and that's, and that's one of the things that, you know, what we're talking about. Maintaining our tree city USA, because, because I was curious about this. You know, what is, you know, what exactly the benefits of tree city USA. Gives to the city and one, one of the number one things that comes down to grant eligibility is, right, I mean, that's.
Belonging to trees.
Yeah.
USA, that's right.
Yeah, and that's, and so I, I worked up and I was, and I was interested in kind of looking at what kind of grants are. Affected if we lost the tree, because now, because here's the thing, right, we, we're going to have to do a report on this, right? On this, on this particular tree, we're going to have to do a report for tree city USA.
Correct.
Yeah, and that's, that's additional, that's additional work that, you know, we don't, we don't mind doing it, but. We want to make sure that when we do that report, we're going to have answers to maintain our status with them.
And we have all the information that we need.
And we need the information, exactly. So, because I was curious about this and I went through, so it's not just a symbolic status. It's a foundational credential for urban forestry grant eligibility, not only in South Carolina, but nationally. And many grants either require or strongly prefer or award even extra points to municipalities that hold tree city USA certification. So if we lost, my understanding of this is if we lost the designation of a tree city USA because we aren't able to accurately. Review this particular removal, then that could mean the city loses access to grant programs that require the tree city USA status. To include federal and state programs such that, you know, federal and state programs across the board. Programs that are such as the. U, US Department of Agricultural, Urban and Community Forestry Grants. Which is administered through the State Forestry Commission, including South Carolina Forestry Commission. Tree city USA status strongly recognizes the baseline for established urban forestry programs and. We, if we don't have our tree the USA certification, we would fall into ineligible or low readiness category for that particular grant. On top of that, we would also no longer be eligible for the Inflation Reduction Act urban forestry grants. Because we would have to demonstrate urban forestry capacity, proof of systemic. And evidence of community engagement and ordinance enforcement. So losing tree city, saving all of these eligibility indicators. Oh, I was very surprised by this because the Charles Street drainage project is federally funded. You know, if we go back to, if we go back to tab two here. This is actually the South Carolina Office of Resiliency. It's a funded project to upgrade storm drainage along Charles Street from Craven Street to the harbor. Including portions of Craven Street and North Street, now this is a resiliency. Project, right? If we lose our tree city USA designation because we can't account for the tree in question. We lose, we could lose out on hazard mitigation resilience program grants. To include programs like FEMA's brick, building resilient infrastructure in communities, we lose award points for, across the board. And if that's the case, I'm not really sure how the city is supposed to get grants when. For resiliency when we're already losing out on, 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 on those points because we no longer have our tree cities USA certification.
That is if we lose it.
That is if we lose it.
Correct.
Yeah, it's a possibility, but again, it's, we're going to have to, you know. As part of our report, we're going to have to fight for it now. In order, in order to, in order to keep it.
Even when tree city USA is not required, it's often used as a scoring metric.
Yeah.
So it is important to keep it, very important.
So yeah, because again, if we, there's potential, then your grants lower repetitiveness, we throw applications. Essentially cuts off the city or cut off the city from millions of dollars worth of grants.
Good.
So. Because we're supposed to go, because we're supposed to talk to city council on Tuesday. We've kind of had it down, kicked out, you know, basically kick from meeting to meeting, we're supposed to go in front of them. To discuss our, our, you know, roles and duties and essentially. Make, make sure that we're one agreement on that, I know that we've got new members on, on the board. Did you guys spend some time going over? Currently, and I know Barb, you're going to be, I'd love to defer to you on this because you're going to be the in-house resident expert in terms of. What we used to have, what abilities we used to have, what we've lost, where, you know, out of the door, to go in.
Having been on this board a long time, I continue in previous years. There were instances where. PTAC would be asked to review a. Tree that somebody wanted to take down on their personal property. As I will say, and we don't do that anymore. So. Pretty much, you know, I feel like we've lost a lot of. Possible. How shall I say this? Statue in the community because we're not asked to participate in, in making decisions. I think that PTAC could offer CP for a lot more than what we currently do.
I would, I would generally agree with that.
And, you know, in years past, we walked around neighborhoods, we were counting tree canopy and. And for an urban forestry program, but that went by the wayside too, so.
That's kind of, that's a recent development comparatively to how long our board's been in existence, right?
I'm not sure how long the sport's been existed, I don't know the answer, but I could say ten years, fifteen years.
Okay.
The board?
The board.
Well, at least, at least the, the, the.
PTAC.
Yeah.
I think it's what, in the nineties. I'm not a landscape architect or any, are y'all a landscape architect? So I know of at least one. Tree company in town, private business that takes trees down for a living, one of the, one of the workers is a landscape architect. Man, they probably used to have landscape architects on, on the board.
There was, at one point it was, it was certified arborist in, in landscape architects. So, right, professionals, so.
Oh no, I mean arborist, I've, I've, I've been working hard, so.
Yeah.
I meant certified arborist.
Correct.
So the tree company I'm talking about, he's a, he's a certified arborist, thanks for indirectly correcting. But, yeah, so, yeah, I mean, yeah, there you go.
So what kind of, what kind of changes would we recommend to city, to the city council? To, you know, kind of reestablish. You know, reestablish a little bit more. A little bit more. Involvement in, in, in these decisions when, 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 you know, the city makes, makes these decisions or if we have. These kinds of appeals, do we, do we want to, you know, request the city to, city council that we review tree permits once again? Is that something that we probably want to do?
I wouldn't mind doing that, I mean, that would be fine.
Okay.
I know, right, I think right now it goes to planning.
Okay, and we're not into planning anymore, are we?
We only looked at the ones that were being appealed previously. Previously.
Okay, yeah, only the ones that are. Is there something that, you know, we would like to ask city council that even if there is. You know. Ask city council that if there is a. Any kind of a city related project that we need to, that as a, as a function of carrying that out, we, you know. Involving a specimen or landmark tree, we should be.
Notified.
Yeah, notify, or at least evolve from the beginning.
Yeah, and, you know, provide input for.
Who's, who's doing that now, TRC or some, some other body, maybe? The good folks that work for the city.
Do you guys have any other? Do you guys have any other?
The other, you know, the other thing that I'm thinking about is that, you know, if somebody wants to take a tree down and things that PTAC or our review, I think that our response should be final, you know, not just a recommendation to city council not to allow this particular tree. I think that we should have, people have a final response.
Okay. As I guess, you know, I would, I would, I would, I wouldn't disagree, I wouldn't necessarily disagree with that because, you know, um where this is essentially our bread and butter, what we do every day. To go over this and make sure that we're keeping, um, with the ordinances and everything set out and, and the code and make sure that we get our recertifications. Um, so I think that would be I think that would probably be something that we could definitely ask the board. Is there anything? Jay, did you have any ideas or anything that?
It, it's my understanding that there used to be a um, city arborist on the payroll.
There was.
And there is no longer.
Correct.
So there's really no one overseeing as an arborist the trees that are coming down.
I do not know the answer to that.
I know that City Utilizer is Michael Murphy.
Yeah, as, and he's called upon as, as needed. Right.
So we should probably, in regards to this particular tree, we should probably
Ask if he was consulted.
Ask to see if he was consulted for that per, per the ordinance. Make sure that happens. Sure. Okay, um, you know, are there any other, Joe, do you have any, any other changes or anything that you would recommend? Or what you would like to, you know, for for responsibilities that you'd like to see us
Yeah, I
ask council for.
I don't know this forwards and backwards, the process of the city, um you know, yeah, you need a permit to take a tree down, um. So I, yeah, you know, things can always be improved. I, I don't know what, I can't really tell what's broken, what's not here, but um so the tree, the meat, the, the, the tree about this meeting, um I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I don't know if I'm, you know, second guessing engineers. I'm, I'm not really second guessing the engineers, but maybe it's just the process, how they they, like you say, the, the um, the communication and there wasn't much, much about it publicly. Um, that, that, that sounds like it can be improved.
Okay. So when we, do you guys want to, is that satisfactory in terms of what we're asking? City council for essentially, so uh, being able to review tree permits uh, that are appealed to us and our decisions become final, um, going to make those, to, to, do we agree on that? And then, um, not only that, but make sure that we're more integrated with the development projects and around the city.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
You know, by virtue of the fact that there's been so many projects where the developers have come in and been allowed to just clear cut. And I know that that grimes all of us, and I know it grimes a lot of people in Buford. So that, it would be really nice to be asked or to be more involved with that process.
Okay, um, do we wanna, here's the, here's the other question, you know, do we wanna be back under, we, we still like, yeah, don't worry, but do we wanna be back under the planning department? Because that's really where these kinds of discussions happen on a consistent basis.
I, I don't see why. Once again, I have appreciated how much Adam has communicated with us over time. And I don't understand, I think there's, there's the possibility that planning can communicate even with Adam.
Okay.
And, you know, he has been very good about passing things on to us. So there just has been the, you know, maybe better communication between all the departments. And, you know, I think that we could be included there from. We were under planning. And Liza Hill was working for the City of Buford for years and, you know, is a landscape, uh, well, she
An arborist.
She's a, yeah, certified arborist, and she was really valuable and helpful. And during that time, PTAC had three arborists on, on this committee and also a landscape architect, maybe, well, two over time. But the point being is that, and that was really, really helpful because she directed a lot of information to us and a lot of work to us. Um, so, so now, I mean, it's not like you're gonna snap your fingers and give a landscape architect on this committee just test, or, or, you know, even another certified arborist. Everybody's busy, you know, doing what they do. But I think that planning could direct things to PTAC, which they're not doing right now.
Okay. Do I have a, do I have a motion to bring that up in front of city council on Tuesday, um, since that'd be the one presenting?
Absolutely, yeah, I do so much.
Do I have a second? Second, alright. Go ahead and uh, present that to city council, so um, I guess the final thing is, um basically going over the report that we need to prepare for city, for city council um, in regards to this particular tree. How do you guys wanna generally go about, um, do you guys want, should, do we, do we try engaging with the, with the senior city staff again to ask for information so that way we can review the decision-making process and cite the ordinances accordingly?
I think you can try.
Okay.
You know, um, we're saying, we say so.
Okay, um. Do we have a timeline that we would like to do, uh, that we would like to give them to at least start getting information for this report? Or, you know, is there, this, my question is, you know, how long, how long?
How long do you give them?
Yeah, how long do we, how long do we give them? And then how, because we'll have to turn around, we'll have to put the report together, and then we'll have to um, and then we'll have to basically, um, vote on that report and then send that to city council directly.
Um, I don't know how long these things take. A week? You know, I mean, the information's there. It's a matter of conveying it.
Yeah.
Am I incorrect in saying that?
I mean, I think, I think unfortunately, we would have had, if, if we had participation from senior staff today, I think we would have probably had a lot more answers, um, and been able to have a clearer picture of, you know, the decision-making, decision-making process. Because I, I've got questions that, you know, I've got questions like, you know, when was it, when was the decision made that this tree needed to be removed? How long ago was that? Um, who made that particular decision?
So you can go into the what-if direction and say, what if they're not gonna cooperate? Then you make your report without that information?
Yeah, I guess we'd have to, I guess we'd have to make their report without, uh, without that information. I think we should probably, I think we should probably note, um, I think we've got, I, you know, I think based off of our standing and, and what we have to provide to Tree City USA, I think that we basically make the report to the city council and say, we tried to do our job.
Right, okay, so then we'll contact them again and request the information and go from there.
Okay.
And, and give it, you know, maybe until the end of next week before Thanksgiving.
Why don't we give them, why don't we give them, um a little longer for that? Because I know that they've got a lot going on. Does that, that be something that you guys would wanna do, or do you wanna?
Say before December first. A whole week of Thanksgiving will be, uh. Right.
Yeah, I'm kind of awash. Let me take a look here.
But the fact of the matter is, is that the information's already there.
Yeah, um, would be, would we be willing to, so we've got the entirety, next week would be a full five business days. Um, the week after that is Thanksgiving. Do you guys wanna give them until, say, December fifth? That be something that you guys wanna do? Give them another full five business days to you know, we can, um
I mean, that's fine.
Okay.
Certainly before the end of the year.
I guess we'll have to, we'd have to ask, you know, what kind of questions are we looking to have answered in regards to this tree removal, kind of the scope of it? So what I can do is, since we've got a regular meeting next Thursday, um, I can work on, uh, I can basically work on drafting up a, a letter that we would agree to um, that we can send to senior city staff, um, and ask them to, um you know, basically ask them for, uh, what information that essentially we're looking for, or even their, their actual participation.
Okay.
And work with them on that and see if they'd be willing to cooperate.
Yeah, then we definitely have to give them to December fifth because you, that's
Yeah.
That's next Thursday.
That's next Thursday already.
Yeah.
Before we even
finalize on it. Okay, so let's go ahead and, um, I can work on that and we can have that by, um I'll have that for next Thursday, and then we'll kind of have a goal of basically saying, we'd like this information by December fifth, and then and then we can go from there with our report. Alright, um, do you guys have any other questions or comments, or is there anything from the general public? Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've got to say something, not just as a reporter, but as somebody who's been here for forty-five years and cared about the trees all the time. Um, almost as long as Barbara's been chairman of this board, before the board existed. One thing you should ask the city for in your presentation is that a city budget, the tree budget, where the money's being spent, where, what's coming in and what's going out. And I don't understand why you think the senior staff's gonna give you any information when the city manager and the attorney have just said, you're not entitled to it. I'm sorry.
Let's try again.
We are willing to, we are willing to give senior staff members as many opportunities to cooperate with our board. We are appointed by city council.
As an advisory board.
We are an advisory board, and we would rather work in cooperation instead of have an adversarial relationship.
Don't you think people are gonna come to city council's meeting Tuesday night upset about that tree, which a report you're saying you're not gonna give to city council till next year? If you give the senior staff until December fifth to get the information, which I don't think they will, but maybe they will. And then you're gonna give a report that far down the road? All the waterfront park could collapse by then. And you don't even know, and we're only talking right now about the Charles Street Bay Street part of this project. That project goes all the way down to King. What other trees are being proposed?
That was one of the questions that I was hoping if we had senior staff here to basically ask, because again, if there are other trees that are gonna be affected as part of this project, because again, it's a, it's a ten-foot wide, fifteen-foot deep trench, and we don't even know what other trees are gonna be wrapped up in this project because we've received absolutely no notification on this.
They haven't been talking about it, but the, that grant cut includes the drainage improvements, you know, to King Street, and that drainage pond the city was up in arms two months, two years ago about. That includes going through the point. So when is the public gonna, when are they gonna remind the public of that? Well, we're just gonna have to look it up and go back and see it. They'll know when the, the, um, bulldozer show up. And the detour signs coming up. I'm sorry, I couldn't just say anything. I'm sorry.
No, thank you. We appreciate it. We appreciate it.
Good luck.
We wanna, we, again, we wanna get to the bottom of this and figure out what exactly, what exactly is going. Is that something, is that something that we would rather shorten the times, timeline on this, or, you know?
In a perfect world, yes. I mean, you know, December fifth, you're going into Christmas and business, and, and that's, that's another, I'm gonna call it a gripe that I have, is that they started this project before Christmas. And my heart goes out to, you know, the Bay Street vendors and Christmas season, and I'm just really surprised that they started. It was not supposed to be started until January, we were told. And now
That's right.
They had a Port Royal last night, they're putting in stormwater drains, and they aren't even starting with their contract until late January.
Well, this contract, we were told at our last meeting, was not supposed to start until after January first.
So would we rather, would we, um, would we be willing, and, and you as, as our regular chair, would we, um would you like a, a letter to be drafted, basically, once again, requesting information, and then we send that to city staff, and if we don't get any kind of response from it, then we go ahead and continue with the report?
Continue with the report.
Okay, so the report, so we would prob- probably have a I guess, um um, I guess an approval date for Thursday of next week for the report being due, right? To be finalized, or at least to be agreed upon?
Meaning that we're gonna ask senior
Yeah, well, we'll ask them, we'll ask them, but again
Day, and if we don't have anything
If we don't have any, if we don't have anything, you know, say we don't have anything by Wednesday, then we'll have to just go ahead and go through with the report and because again, we're just asking for documentation, emails, you know, basically, who decided this tree was gonna get cut down, and when was that?
Was there an arborist or
Where, is there, please, yeah, send over the arborist report. Can you send over all the plans? Okay, so
Simple question, I mean, they're simple questions.
Okay, so let's go ahead, um
And I guess, I guess what I find surprising is that we don't have answers to these things, even though, you know, it's been asked. I the lack of cooperation, I'm just very surprised and a bit of gas at it. Really am.
I think, you know, my own, my own personal opinion, I have a lot of concerns that we might not get information because the, as far as we're able to look at public documents, we don't see we don't see the ordinance being followed in the way, in the manner it should have been. So, alright, so give senior, senior city staff until Wednesday to provide some kind of a documentation, so, um, we'll ask for an arborist report. Um, alternative and alternative design, um, design plans.
Email where we were informed.
So the city, I don't believe the city took the tree down because this is if somebody said grant money or, I, I think this is the arbor money, maybe it's a combination, but, um
Who took the tree down?
Yeah, that's actually, yeah, that's another good question.
Private, private company?
Yeah, yeah, that, that is a private company.
So, yeah.
Seven thirty, Monday morning.
What's that?
Seven thirty, Monday morning, they were out there.
Okay.
See you at West?
There was nothing on the side of the trucks.
On the side of the trucks. Steven Murray was there, you could ask Steven.
Uh, oh damn, is there a shot? They got cameras around their building.
Now, if it was three in the morning, something's real fish.
Okay, so we'll ask for the arborist report per the, uh, Buford ordinance, um, per the code. We'll ask for alternative design plans per the code. We will ask for the communications notifying PTAC of this. Uh, we'll ask for, then, we'll ask for the timestamps of notification when we were told. Um, and then, uh, we'll also include, we can also ask, uh, who was the contractor who cut down the cut down the tree? Do you guys wanna ask if it was a put-out-to-bid, or if it was a sole-source contract, or?
Doesn't the ordinance say it was supposed to be put up?
I believe so, yeah.
It does say that.
Alright, so let's go ahead and, um, figure out if that was a bid or a sole-source contract for that particular tree. Okay, so I can, I can work on this, and then do we have a, um, timeframe in which, you know, we would like to get this letter to city, to city, um, to, uh, senior cities staff, um, requesting these documents?
Monday, I would say, yeah.
No later, but basically
ASAP.
ASAP, okay. And then are we all comfortable with if I draft it and send it to Barb and she approves it? Are we comfortable as a, as a, as a committee with that kind of decision?
Yes, I would like to see it.
And then she, yeah, then she can
Send it to everybody.
Yeah, because we can't, we can't have, we cannot have any kind of forum outside of public meetings.
Right.
So I just wanna make sure that we're in, in compliance with South Carolina sunshine laws. So I can work on it, send it to Barb, and then Barb can talk with you guys and, um, individually, I guess, and send it to you and say, hey, this is what, this is what we got.
Okay.
Okay, um and then we'll give them until Wednesday, and then if we don't hear anything, then we will prepare our report um, for our Thursday meeting next week, um, and I
I think a question, or is it appropriate to include a question of the possibility of other trees like we referred to a few minutes ago, being affected
Okay.
in this plan?
So I did have a question about So I did have a question about, I mean, it sounds like a rare event, but the. The. You know, a public works is taking a tree down, that would. That might be, or, or. Do a maintenance on a tree, that'd be different, but this was Arpa money, so this might be kind of the rare side. So I, I, I just don't hate you for saying that, but I mean, I. I'm not playing devil's advocate, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what, what, what we're all. I mean, I understand some of it, I'm just trying to get a grasp of all of it.
You know, you bring up a good.
We're trying to get information from the city.
Yeah, you bring up, you give, you bring up a good point, Joe, because I know that this, that particular drainage project is currently. Um, primarily being headed up by SCOR. Um, the South Carolina Office of Resiliency. And if you guys want, I can probably reach out to. Um, let's see here, Pam Kendrick. Um, at SCOR, she's the infrastructure manager and I can talk to her and see what information she might have. Um. You know, cause again, if, if, cause you know, the understanding of grants is the, you know, grant money is issued as long as. You know, local, state and local ordinances are followed on a consistent basis. And if we, you know, if we find that, you know, we're missing, we're missing key parts of, uh. Of examining this and we're missing key parts regarding this particular tree. I mean, it could even open up the possibility that they could claw back the grant money to begin with because it wasn't, our ordinances weren't followed. So I can, I can reach out to her if that's, if. The board, if, you know, if the committee is comfortable with that, I can reach out to her and see what information I can, I can, um. Um, I can get and see if I can bring that to our particular meeting next Thursday. Is that something that you guys would wanna do?
What information would you ask for?
Um, asking her for what information she has about the particular project, if there's anything that mentions tree removals anywhere. Um, since I know SCOR is a, uh, integral part of this drainage, of this drainage project.
Are they the ones that actually came up with the, um, the project? Then or?
I don't know.
Have alternative, uh?
I mean, I don't, we haven't got, like I said, we haven't, you know, we haven't gotten any kind of answers, um. Um. To the, to, you know, to our questions, but project description, uh, SCOR ASAP funded project. So I would, I would assume that if they've got the money, and we even gotta hear, you know, in the presentations, it says SCOR with their logo on it. So I would assume that they would probably have some idea of what, what exactly is going on. Um, with the particular project and if other trees might be affected.
My immediately, immediate question is. How would she know about that?
She's the infrastructure, um. Manager.
With a plan.
And this is technically.
Should a plan have been submitted to her?
I would assume so.
And McCormick Taylors are the engineers who did it?
I think, yeah, I think so. I think that's the, I think that's the design firm.
Probably contact her if we don't hear from.
Senior city staff?
Senior city staff.
Okay. Definitely do that.
Like, what does Amanda say on your report that she paid back last meeting?
Oh, Raul Dominguez.
We do say, project considerations on their letterhead and the, the designer. Brand trees and landscaping, so they must have a master plan for the whole. Project.
Yeah. I would, I would hope so, at least, or at least there had been some kind of discussion. Okay, so if, um. So essentially, if we don't hear from South, uh, excuse me, from senior city officials, um. Senior city staff, uh, about our questions that are burst report. Alternative design plans that were created to avoid the tree. Um, the communications notifying PTAC that this. Tree, uh, the decision to, uh, cut down this tree was about to be made. Um, and then who cut the tree down, uh, with, and whether or not that particular. Contract, that particular vendor was either, uh, a bid or a sole source contract. Other trees to be affected and if we don't get any answers or radio silence on that, then we will contact SCOR and. Um, see if we can find out, uh, what information, what plans they have. That sound? Reasonable?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Um, I think that before you contact SCLR and take that step, that we would need to. Know that you're doing that.
Okay.
Okay. You know, before you do it.
You wanna just table that until next Thursday and, and discuss that on Thursday?
That one.
Okay, alright. That would be our plan. Do I have a motion, uh, to put together a letter for senior city staff with our questions again?
Oh, I do so.
Second, or do I have a second?
Second.
Alright. So be it. Alright, alright.
Ask Scott, do we have any alarm bells about this tree coming down? Or?
Well, yeah, Chair, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability that you may have, uh, at this meeting. And whatever questions I can, I consider if you can provide to me a writing, I'd be happy to get you answered.
Okay.
So I've been in meetings this afternoon, so I, I'm, I'm here now.
Okay.
No matter about meetings, but.
Um, why don't we make a list of questions for you? To answer.
Can you immediately that can answer for you, that would make your process simpler?
I think, um, do we want this and do we wanna give them time to, um? Do we wanna give them time to have the, you know, a little bit more detail, um, or do? You know, if, if there's someone, you know, if there's, uh. I don't know, do we wanna give them time for more detail or do we want to just? I guess shoot them in the head, which one would you prefer?
Well, I certainly would like, you know, detailed answers if it calls for that. I think that's, I'm sure all of us would.
Okay.
Um.
Do we have pressing questions that we want answered now?
What we would love to have are, what are the questions that you asked already?
Um, we were basically looking for documentation regarding the, uh, the removal of the tree, um, and anything, anything, um.
What are the three questions that you're gonna?
Arborist report, do, do we want a motion to include Mr. Marshall here at the table? Do I have a second?
Sure.
Alright, thanks, I'll see, thank you. So. Do you know if the city completed an arborist report?
I don't believe the city completed an arborist report. This is a project that is managed by SCORE, it's a SCORE project, it's not a city project. And so, uh, I would think that the burden for that would fall on SCORE, but that's something we could definitely investigate for.
Okay, and is there, do you know of alternative design plans that might have been created to? Mitigate the impact on the tree or go around the particular tree in question?
I don't have precise knowledge of it. I, I was told that they did try to work out some other options around the tree. Uh, but that the alternate options were more destructive than a lot of taking.
Okay, would we be provided with, uh, those?
If we can get them from the, uh. From, from SCORE, yeah.
Okay, and, and all the record would, would match the, what you're saying right now, is that?
That's true also.
Okay, otherwise, I was told wrong.
So is that something you do? Do you ask for those?
I, I, I can ask for those.
Okay.
Through my capital projects manager. He's, he, he's acting more related, he's not a project manager for this, he's more a liaison. Uh, from, from the project manager and the contractor to the city. He's not managing the project per se.
Is that why maybe when we asked about the tree and he said drainage ditch was under the tree, when in fact it's not under the tree, it's. The right of the tree?
Here's what you find when you do, uh, projects that are having great stitches in the ground that are a hundred years old. You, you break the ground for where you, you think they are, where the locator told you the pipe is, and the pipe might not be there. And so, um, if he told you it was gonna be one location and it wasn't, that's not uncommon for a project of this type.
Do you know, is there any chance that you know who approved the removal of the tree or is this a, is that still an outstanding question?
It, it, that's still an outstanding question, but my understanding after speaking with council is that. A public utility project is not subject to the same scrutiny and restrictions and. Uh, approval process that other projects are subject to.
Is that in regards to the permit process or to the three aspects requiring, um, alternative designs? An arborist and notifying PTAC?
I, I presume that's all up together, that's, I, I, that's part of the permitting process, I would imagine, so. Um, I, I think that's not applicable to a public utility project.
Okay. Um. Do you guys have any other questions or anything, or?
So if there's a problem. Like, who is the, are you saying, um? The, the Dominguez? The man who came to us at our last meeting? As the liaison, is he the one who? Like, who knows what's going on here in the city of Buford if you're telling me that SCORE is in charge of everything? Like, who do we go to if we had a problem?
You, you can come to me or you can come to my capital projects.
Okay.
Are there other trees that are up for, uh, removal currently in this, based off of this project?
To my knowledge, no, but that doesn't mean it's not, doesn't mean there are trees that are, are, they are, I'm not aware of them.
Okay. Um.
Yeah, so Scott, you agree if they take that live oak, I mean, common sense would be they. They probably looked at it from every, from many different ways of trying to. Save it or, or hey, we gotta tear it down or they come to that decision.
Right.
I mean, you just don't tear it, live oak down, just, and don't blink, I mean.
I know.
Spent a hundred year old tree.
I, you know, I mean, we would like to think that's the case. But. Their aim and their direction is to. Get sewer pipe in and. Make the projects successful and. They're probably not thinking about the trees like we are. I mean, do you get the gist of what I mean?
Well, then you could, you could.
They're not as valuable to them as they are to us. Who live here.
I mean, people, people are saying all kinds of comments on this tree on the internet, but I mean, they could even say. You know. They're spending money on these pipes, they should be spending somewhere else, or, you know, it goes on and on, I mean.
You're talking about the, the pipes going down, say.
So if we really, if this project, we, I, I, I'm not here second guessing engineers, I mean, I, I know the, the people at the city work hard, but. I think some of this in here is good and I, I, I feel like some of it maybe were. Uh, micromanaging, I, I don't know, but. But if, if, I mean, if the tree came down, yeah, it, it's sad, so I.
I, I would be aghast if I lived on, say, whatever, King Street. And, you know, here comes the construction and I had a big live oak. That all of a sudden was taken down without any knowledge. Any agreement, anything. I would, I would be more than upset.
Worse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, that, so that's one of the questions that, that we have, you know, in moving forward, what, what else is on? Agenda here? Else is in the plan?
I do have a question. When were you first made aware that this tree was gonna be cut down?
I don't have that, hey. It was by word of mouth and I don't, what I wrote down by, when I received that word.
Do you know who you received that word from?
Uh, I believe it was Mr. Dominguez.
And you don't recall all roughly the timeframe whatsoever?
I don't, but we're, we're talking about weeks and not less.
Okay. Um, and then is there, is there any steps that you are committed to, to make sure that PTAC is more involved in these types of decisions? So is less of a blind side, um, when we are notified that something this major is gonna occur?
In this particular case, I believe. Super Ming has spoke to you, I haven't, I haven't watched the meeting, but I believe he can speak to you on October twenty-third.
Correct.
Okay.
If I, if I may.
Please.
The, I, at least for my own, um. No, you're fine. At least for, you know, I, I speak for myself, not, not my fellow, um, many members, but I felt that that. Notification was a little bit less of advanced notice and it was more an afterthought. Um, especially considering if I'm not mistaken, his exact words, the, the tree should have been cut down earlier this week, but. It's Thursday, so I assume that hasn't happened roughly, I believe this is exactly what he said, um. And so to me, that's less of a notifying PTAC in advance. Because if the tree had been cut down on, say, Monday, we met on Thursday. We would then be meeting to say, hey, by the way, we cut down a massive tree, I don't see that as. Advanced notification. I feel like that's just a scheduling, uh, mishap, essentially, um. And we just happened to, we just happened to catch it in time and, like, you know, I don't, I wouldn't really necessarily consider that a notice. Does that, does that make sense?
City came to talk to me about it.
Maybe is PTAC not, or is PTAC not required to be noticed, uh, to be notified of these types of removals?
I, I think it's a good idea that you be notified of these types of removals. Whether, whether an opportunity existed or not, I don't know until I feel it back on the exact date that we're open to. Exact date you've asked me at. Uh, materially. It wouldn't have made a difference anyway. Tree had to come down.
Okay.
So I, 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 I know you want answers. I know you don't like the fact that the tree, I don't like the fact the tree came down either. But I also understand the gravity of the project. I also understand the last minute changes that the contractor was putting on this project. It's like.
Who is the contractor?
Gulfstream. So. The best illustration and what continually comes to my mind is, is, is Lucy holding the football park on the ground. We get told that there's a certain, uh, projection that this project is on and then changes. And then we have to change our communication with the public. And then something else changes, so then we have to communicate that to the public. Because the city is the one doing the communication, it makes it look like we're not telling you exactly what's going on and we keep changing the story on it. When in reality, we're trying to keep you informed with the latest information that we have. That's the frustrating position that we're in. We don't want the tree to come down. But I do know the project well enough to know there's no way that project can be successful without that tree being. And that's, that's unfortunate. I also know that if this project is not done in twenty, thirty, forty years, you won't have to worry about shopping on Bay Street because there won't be a Bay Street. This drainage project is vital, especially the sea level rise. To being able to continually drain that neighborhood. And have it function and be a healthy, uh, civic environment.
One of the questions I have is, we were told that the. Project would not start until after the first of the year, until after the Christmas season. And I have stated before that, you know, my, my heart bleeds. For the vendors, why did it start? So why did it start? You know, why did they not wait until after the first of the year?
Because when they broke the hole open, uh, on the. I do my conference on a lot on the west end of the, uh, waterfront park. Uh, they found, uh, the conditions underneath not what they were expecting. And requires further engineering evaluation. In order to not stop the project completely, in order to keep the project moving along, so this funding can be secure and we continue to. To get to a successful conclusion for the project. Then they accelerated to the fact that that opening between, uh, that, that intersection opening at Bay and Charles. Um, had to be opened and it would be open on or about November thirteenth. We didn't like that either. We had very little notice that that was going to happen. Um, it sent shockwaves not through, not only through the city, but, uh, our state representative Shannon Erickson. Paid a visit to the director of SCORE. Had the governor's office wired in on her communications with them. Um, this was something that was, uh, at the highest levels possible. We tried our best to get that pushed back to after the first of the year or at least till after the major holiday events in December. There was no way it could be done. We extinguished every possibility. We even threw up a Hail Mary at the end. And it, it didn't work. And so that, that's why. That's, that's the reason why. It wasn't because, it wasn't a bait and switch and the city told us it'd be in January, then we just decided to open up this hole in December. That's not what we wanted to have. We, we tried everything we knew how to do, had our state representative involved, she was talking directly to the director of SCORE. Nothing more we could have done. It is a shame. And that's why we're working as hard as we are with the business community downtown to try to make sure we get the message out that. Downtown is still open. The only thing closed is this intersection. But everything else is still open, it's thriving. And so we're providing incentives for the, uh, stores and incentives to get shoppers downtown. We are beefing up the decorations downtown. We're providing. Uh, merchants with, uh, up to a hundred dollar side bin for doing a window display so it looks extra special Christmasy.
Free parking.
So free parking in the marina.
Free parking.
That we open early.
Free parking on Bay Street?
Not free parking on Bay Street.
It's good.
Well.
That's right.
There's mixed opinion on that and, and I think you will find that most of the merchants down there are not in favor of that. And if you have free parking on Bay Street, a lot of the employees, especially at the restaurants, will park in those spots in the morning. And they'll stay there all day and all evening until they leave. And then there's no turnover in the parking spots for customers who come in and actually buy things. And if that continues too long, and and we have employees who are taking up spots all day long, they won't have any customers to worry about that, so. Um, so that's the reason why we, those those spots require turnover in order to make commerce work downtown.
Y'all have a nice day, I gotta meet somebody, sorry.
Okay, all right, thank you, Joe.
Bye.
Um, are you, is, are you committed to working with PTAC on our statutory obligations to review? Um, put together a review report, make sure that documents that we need to complete said report to issue to city council will be fulfilled?
I I have to know what what report and what review you're trying to.
So we, PTAC has the authority to put together a report to submit it to the city council, basically outline and make and make a recommendation and make sure that the removal of this tree was in compliance with, you know, whether it's with requirements of score or the requirements of the ordinance or whatever had to, right? Um, we have that ability to do that because uh, you know, we are charged with maintaining and overseeing forest management in the city of Beaufort. Um, and in order to do so.
Well, honestly, just correct, you don't have any oversight authority, that's false.
Uh, unfortunately, this committee does disagree with you on that.
It does, no matter that you disagree with me, I'm reading the ordinance, and there's no oversight authority in the ordinance.
Can you please, could you please explain why, um, or excuse me?
Do you have the, do you have the ordinance language in front of you?
I do.
Please read your scope of responsibilities.
Section three dash three zero zero five duties and responsibilities, it shall be the responsibility of the commission to maintain and periodically update an urban forestry management plan, which supplements and corresponds with the comprehensive plan for the city. The management plan shall define the species of trees to be utilized as street easement, right of way, and park trees when appropriate. It will specify this best practices and horticultural requirements for the planting, maintenance, and preservation of said trees. It shall provide to the city manager, as requested, an assessment of the city parks and will make recommendations as to improvements, decommissioning and or the commissioning of parks and public open spaces within the city. It shall be responsible for the planning of the annual Arbor Day celebration and will recommend necessary procurements. It will be responsible for the maintenance of the requisite data for recertification by the Arbor Day Foundation of the city as a Tree City USA. It shall make recommendations to the city council for the prioritized allocation of monies from within the city's tree fund account on an annual basis.
I I I heard oversight nowhere in there, what I've never gotten from you is an urban forestry management plan. And that is one of your responsibilities.
That is correct. There's a big but here, my understanding is that it's gonna cost many, many thousands of dollars, because it is beyond our scope here for us to do it, that is something that we have to order in from thresholds.
Yeah, wasn't the, if I remember correctly, I was reading, um, I was reading prior, first off, I'm gonna focus on the Tree City USA requirements, but um I thought that the, I thought PTAC was denied access to city computers because of uh employee information, which is why we're unable to complete a for uh a a forest management program.
I don't know how that's related.
We were, I was looking at, I was looking at prior explanations and 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 agendas in regards to the um in in regards to that, basically saying that we weren't able to um, that basically PTAC does, was not allowed to um access uh uh the city computers in order to put that together.
I, I, yeah, I.
I would have to go, I I can go back and look and and submit that, but um, Mr. Marshall, are you aware of the requirements of the Tree City USA um certification?
No, go ahead.
Um, so Tree City USA program administered by the Arbor Day Foundation in partnership with the USDA Forest Service sets national standards for municipal urban forestry programs. Beaufort voluntarily participates and recertifies annually, PTAC's ordinance-based responsibilities explicitly include maintaining the data needed for recertification. Tree City USA's four recognition standards include a tree boarder department such as PTAC, uh tree care ordinance, so the city must adopt and enforce an ordinance that defines public trees, establishes management authority, sets rules for removal, pruning, and planting, outlines permitting, enforcement, and responsibilities. The ordinance must promote tree preservation, not solely tree removal. The community forestry program with an annual budget of at least two dollars per capita, the city must track expenditures, including planting, maintenance, removals, arborist work, and canopy management. An annual Arbor Day observance and proclamation demonstrates continuing community engagement. These four standards are not procedural suggestions, they are audited annually during our recertification period. Um, so part of the tracking of tree loss is an explicit inherent requirement of standards one, two, and three. Uh, because we have to monitor tree removals, tree health assessments, policy and ordinance compliance, and net canopy loss. In order to do that, we have to review decisions about canopy loss to include the tree in question. So I'm trying to understand how we are being told we have no oversight over a decision when it's explicitly in the obligations of Tree City USA for us to review canopy loss as a part of our recertification.
Is either item one or two, three, that, red four things that were?
Uh, first one is a tree boarder department designated body like PTAC must be legally established to advise, plan, and oversee aspects of urban forestry management.
Tree what, a tree what? Department?
Tree board or department, correct.
Tree board or department, okay, I didn't understand what you're saying.
The board must hold regular public meetings and maintain involvement in tree-related matters. The second item was a tree care ordinance, so the city has to adopt and enforce an ordinance, defines public trees, establishes management authority, sets rules for removal, pruning, and planting, and outlines permitting, enforcement, and responsibilities.
Did you do any of those things for Southside Park?
Were we asked to?
Yep. Not asked to. All right, there was a separate commission that was, you know, part of the, that you call it Southside Park Commission.
Uh, it was the Southside Task Force.
And have you done this, have you done this for any other public project? But have you done this for any other public projects on the city?
Have we, have you been asked to?
No.
So again, you know, the question.
I don't think we've asked you this time either.
If I, if I may, the the question, you know, the question about whether or not we have the authority to review a decision is it, we are unable to recertify, because we handled the recertification, am I correct, for the Tree City USA?
Along with?
In conjunction with
Correct.
Public Works Department, but we essentially have to make sure that we account for these things to include canopy loss. So I'm trying to understand, again, we are gonna have to do a separate report to account for the tree in question, and then we're being told we don't have any authority to ask about it.
And so you don't have authority to ask about it, so you don't have oversight authority.
Yeah, would you be able to define that difference?
You're allowed to ask questions about the process, of course, but oversight implies you've got some sort of authority to uh manage decisions.
We have never, we have never, we have, we have, I'll, I'll be honest, Mr. Marshall, we have never asserted that we have any kind of judicial authority whatsoever. But in order for us to provide a report to city council, we do have to ask questions.
Right.
And that does give us a level of oversight on the city's actions, because in order for us to make that report, we also have recommendations. Those recommendations are tied to overseeing a decision and saying, hey, we don't think, you know, in our recommendation, we don't think that this decision was followed according to the policies and procedures of the city.
But you haven't done this for any other public project in the city.
Have we been asked to?
To my knowledge.
But what difference does that make?
I I'm, I'm getting there, you haven't done this for any other, and if it's a requirement, uh clearly, uh it has not kept us from getting our Tree City USA designation previously. So uh I realize this is a a tree that's getting a lot of public attention, and I get it. And so I question your motivation. Buy this tree. Why now? What is the point of, you were told that the tree was coming down October twenty third, you had the opportunity to ask a lot of questions or submit a list of questions to the staff that we could have begun answering for you. But you didn't, you didn't get involved in any of this until it was public outrage and you reacted to it. So I I I I don't.
Mr. Marshall, what is our scheduled meeting?
So to, to tell me that suddenly you want to follow every rule in Tree City USA and that that's your charge, and that's what it is all along, and that's how you've operated along, is absolutely false. You haven't, you chose to react to this situation.
And what's the problem now?
What's that?
I said, what's the problem in that, that's all.
There, there's no crime in that, except the method in which you go about it. We, we are on the same team, we don't have to be adversarial with each other.
We don't want to be adversarial whatsoever, so.
Well, when you attempt to have a, a, a administrative oversight hearing, and you send notices to appear to my staff members, who then send me emails and say, do I need to get a lawyer, that's pretty adversarial. There's a, there was a better way to go about that.
We did, we did ask for participation, it was not mandatory, we've never asserted mandatory participation. I do have a question, if we, if our, you know, again, we were notified on October twenty third that this was happening, so if we as a committee are going to have to put questions together um and agree on said questions before we send them to city staff, when was our next, when is our next regular scheduled meeting?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday, so we've called this particular meeting because we feel that this, it requires a little bit more um urgency than simply waiting another week to have a regular meeting to then discuss it. And it just so happened that it also happens to be the same week that the tree was cut down, I thought, um, my understanding is that we were gonna be asking question, you know, putting together a list of questions at our next meeting to basically say, hey, we would like to know why this tree was being cut down.
So what is the urgency, can I ask? When you have a meeting scheduled for next Thursday, what is the urgency in scheduling an emergency meeting other than to be the apple?
In my view, the sooner the better.
The tree's already down, we're not changing that. So you had a meeting scheduled for next Thursday that you would have had more time to prepare for, and we would have been able to have more time to prepare to answer your questions. When you pull a meeting together in two days and you attempt to call it an emergency oversight hearing, that puts it in a whole different light. It doesn't change the fact the tree was cut down when the tree was cut down, and both of these meetings, today and next Thursday are after that. But the manner in which you've gone about this is fairly distasteful.
I beg to disagree.
Then we can agree to disagree.
Obviously, we thought this was very important to pursue in a more timely fashion than we did.
Well, what, what was to be gained by six days?
Answers.
What's he gained?
Well, obviously, we didn't gain anything because we didn't get any answers.
Right, well, you could have submitted the questions that you would like to have had answered, and we could have had those for you at your meeting next Thursday.
How are we gonna, how are we gonna agree on, on questions without forum? We would have to have another, we would have to, we would have to get together in a meeting, and all, all of us would have to sit and discuss the questions that we would like to have answered. So if we're unable to, so, you know, again, it's basically asking, you know, violate sunshine laws for South Carolina, because we would have to talk to each other, and that'd be a forum outside of the public view. We just, we went over this entire, in this meeting, we went over the questions that we would, that we are gonna be putting together in a letter, and we're giving city staff another attempt to answer questions that we have, we have very specific questions about this. And we've, we've discussed that here today. Now, I'm trying to understand how, you know, we're supposed to put together a bunch of questions and all agree on it, but then also not do it in, then the public discussion, the realm of the public side. That's the, that's the issue that I have with this, and that's why, that I would say that's probably why we scheduled this meeting, because we already know we have a regularly scheduled meeting next week. So that way we can give, we can send it to the, that way we can send the questions to the city staff. We can get answers and put things together, and then we can discuss it at our next regularly scheduled meeting. We're entering into the holiday season in which, you know, we don't have, unless we keep, unless we keep uh scheduling special meetings, then we're gonna not be meeting until, I'm not mistaken, November is our last meeting for this year, is it not?
That is correct.
That is correct, yeah, and.
You know, December is the Arbor Day planting.
Arbor Day planting, so we won't not meet on a regular scheduled meeting until January, so I feel like this particular emergency meeting is absolutely justifiable.
And, and that report has to be submitted, I think, by, is it the first part of January to Tree City USA?
I believe it's, I think one might be February, I don't know.
So, you know, that's coming up too.
So were your original intentions not to have staff members present here so you could ask them questions?
We had hoped that we would have.
So how did, how did you come to determine what questions you would ask them without having a forum to do that, to your point earlier? How did you decide on those questions?
We was a, um, we basically all decided that we were gonna have individually, have our own list of questions to ask staff. I know that I've got, I know that I've got questions that I've drafted up on my own, but there's no, I don't think there's any, you guys had questions that, your own questions, and we've never talked about them, correct?
I think.
Yeah.
We felt it was important to have a forum to discuss this together, so that answers should pass.
Do you guys have any more questions for me?
What we'd like to do is submit questions to staff by Monday and perhaps have the answers by Thursday, is that possible? It's not complicated.
So then, when, Monday?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll get you the answers as quickly as we can, that that applies to you. But some of the answers will have, we may have to go through the contractor to get. So uh, and similarly, you're, you're, you're welcome to go directly to the contractor for those answers as well.
Okay. Do you have a contact person?
I can, I can bother, I can get one for you.
Because again, you know, the, the, this is unfortunate, this has happened so late in the year, because again, you know, we've got, we've got a report that we've got to handle by the beginning of, beginning of the year. And in order to do that, we have limited amounts of time to meet in order to make sure that that report is particularly finalized. So yes, there is a little bit of a time crunch, at least for our committee, because we need to achieve that deadline. That deadline doesn't move, I can't, we can't go to Tree City USA and say, hey, actually, you know, we're gonna ask to bump it a couple of months because we're not ready. That's not how we're able to do it.
But Mr. Anderson, this committee has never put that type of information in reports before to Tree City USA. You've never asked questions about uh trees and public projects before, to my knowledge.
And I think.
What's wrong with being a first time?
I was about to say, I think that's, I, I think, you know, I think, to be honest, one of the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak for myself as a, as a committee member. I was put on this committee by, by city council because I am very particular about the way things are done, and I want them to be all above board. And if that means that the, these reports have not been filled out in the past, then that's very unfortunate. But that just, that is, while I sit on this committee, that, that will not fly whatsoever.
Any other questions?
We appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming, but I could, I think, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. What?
All right, um, does anybody have any um concluding remarks or anything that um that we would like to further discuss at this point in time?
I do not, you've covered it all.
All right, um, well then, I would like to make a motion to return the um meeting chair duties back to our usual chair.
One second.
All right. Yeah.
Nice to close this.
Very good, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.